No hits.
I'm meeting with, I'm meeting with Mel. You.
All right, Nick Kikthavy, Public Works Site Plan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Again, I'm Nick Kikthavy, Assistant County Administrator, here to talk about our Public Works Site Planning Process. I was here last April in a work session to get this kicked off as well, and today we want to present a draft for the board. I don't think the clicker is... There we go. All right, so the need for the site plan for our Public Works Headquarters in Cologne, for me, the biggest driver is the 212 project. So we'll be showing a couple layouts in a minute, and you'll quickly see that we are changing the entrance. Our current entrance is going to be in a pond, so we need to shift that over. Also, our sign would be on the embankment to that pond, so we need to relocate that sign as well. With that, the 212 project also has a lot of extra soils that they need to find a place for, so with that, we're looking at doing some berming on the site as well. So with that, that's triggering a need for updating our conditional use permit. So when we are, when we have our conditional use permit open, we also want to look at our future needs. One of the more short-term needs is the paving on the site. So we currently have funds set aside to repave the Public Works Headquarters site, so with that, we want to make sure that we are not paving areas that are going to be future buildings or expansions, so make sure we're accounting for that looking forward. So with that, I will invite our architect, John with Leo A. Daly, to give an overview of the site.
Welcome.
Oh, Leo A. Daly, sorry.
That's all right, I won't, I won't take, take it personally. John McNamara with World Architects, so it's nice to be here, Commissioners, to kind of talk through some of the things that we've been working with, with the Public Works team, on how we might kind of reimagine the site, looking out into the future, and certainly, as Nick had mentioned, this realignment of the entry has spurred a lot of conversation related to how we might enter the site, how we might change some of the internal circulation, and what types of things should be included in the updated conditional use permit. So the slide that's up there right now is the, is the, what the site will look like after the 212 project is completed this summer, and you can see what we're showing on here is New County Road 137, which shifts that road over adjacent to the property line, so there'll be a new road easement and some of that type of stuff that's going in there after that pond gets built. And so what is shown on there is what is currently in that 212 project and what that might look like, but as we started to look through what we might do to the site itself, we started to kind of think through all of the different variables that might come into play as the site starts to adapt to some of the future changing, and so one of the first things that we had talked about is that there is that excess dirt from that 212 project, which opens up an opportunity to add some additional screening around the site, which would be important to consider where that screening is going, how does that impact any potential site fencing and gates and some of that type of stuff, and so there is some berming that's part of the 212 project already, some of that excess dirt is already planned to be used around the south side of the site along 212, and then heading north of that existing pond. But there is the capacity to extend that screening all the way up and around the site, and so what we are showing on here is with that realignment of the road, there would likely be a berm that might start a little bit north of that north entry, near where the salt shed is, go up and around where the sheriff's impound storage is, coming across to where that conservation area is, where the wetland is, and then coming down along the west side of the site and then around the front, so the opportunity is to provide some screening all the way around the site if that's a direction that we want to go. And then we started to build out from that to provide an idea of where we might fence the site, not necessarily closing off the entire site where some of the parking is, but close off some of the operations area of the site to provide some added safety and security for that, and so we have a fence shown all the way around the site that would connect up to the existing building and close off that backyard area and those storage buildings back in that area, but still allow for adequate circulation and for future needs of the site. One of the other opportunities that came up was if we are really looking at the road realignment, there is a little connector that we show there in red, that's an existing one that connects up to the yard area on the north side, and it would be beneficial to look at separating the parking areas of the site from the larger vehicles that are in there, and so what we're showing on here is that with some development in that area, to consider getting rid of that connector drive there, that's really not necessary, there's a small service need for the fiber optics area there, but that can be accessed off the road or off of the south side of that parking area. And then with the new entrance over by the salt shed, with the vehicle circulation, we're suggesting that shifting the fuel island over to allow better circulation around the fuel island would be a good thing to do, there is some discussion related to the condition of the current fueling island that would benefit from being reconstructed, and if you are going to reconstruct it now, it would be an opportunity to kind of look at shifting it over so that we can get our vehicles to be able to move around it. This doesn't suggest that we're relocating the tanks themselves, they're in good shape and can stay where they are, this would just physically relocate and reconstruct the fuel island.
How far?
Looks like we would move it over roughly about 30 feet to be able to allow circulation all the way around it versus just the one side of it, yep.
And then what about the fence, I'd assume chain link?
Correct, yeah.
Eight foot, 10 foot?
Probably.
Barbed wire on top, or no, or?
That's a good question, we should probably bring it back to the Public Works group, but I wouldn't think we would need much more than a six to eight foot high fence to provide security around the building. We could talk about, you know, as far as the view corridor in there, as to what we want that fence to look like, but typically a chain link fence is what is usually provided around our Public Works facilities.
Thank you.
Yep. As we look at some of the other operational things, there is a current brine making inside the existing truck wash, we've identified some locations where you could relocate that on-site as we expand some of the storage areas around the existing salt bunker. So we're trying to anticipate some growth opportunities on the site. Moving the brine out of the existing wash bay would kind of clean that area up, it's quite tight in there, so we wanted to make sure as we're looking at site circulation, where could that go if the desire is to move that? One of the other things that we had talked about with the group, if we're going to be doing a paving project, specifically in the back area, but also in the front area, the current front parking area used by employees, a lot of those vehicles have gotten bigger over the years, and so there's lots of pickup trucks and stuff in there, and so the suggestion was to look at restriping that front lot into 10 by 20 stalls versus the, you know, nine by, you know, the nine foot wide by 18 foot stalls that are there right now. There'd be a slight reduction in the number of stalls, but not enough to make a difference for employee parking and, and people coming to the building. And so a lot went into kind of looking at some of the other things, we're also showing a special collections area, we also are looking at making sure that with security and how those gates work, that if there's a need for people to drop off stuff back in that area, on how kind of that circulation would work in there with the two sets of gates that are be proposed with that fencing project. So one of the other things that we spent some time talking with the team about was, we can't ignore the potential for expansion on the site. None of these are suggesting that these are going to occur, these are locations that they could occur. Some of these came from early, earlier master plans back in 2001, and then we looked at expanding on that based on some of the things that have already occurred on-site, and some of the things that might also be considered. There are some warm and cold storage buildings that are located on the site for the sheriff's department and for others, that it seemed like similar-sized buildings could also fit either inside that fenced area or elsewhere, depending upon what the needs are for the county long-term. Obviously, with building expansions, additional parking is also potentially warranted on-site, and so we've also identified a couple of areas where you could expand parking if the need arises there, so we are showing the opportunity for building on the west side, a little bit on the south side, that's a little bit more challenging there because of the slope on the site, but you could potentially build a building pad in that area without impacting the, the site too much, we would need to obviously relook at some of the stormwater stuff as it relates to that, and then there are some areas on the building that we want to be aware of if that existing building on-site needs to expand, where those areas of expansion might occur. A number of those were talked about in some of the previous strategic plans that we've just identified on this document, so that it's all in one location, so that if you're, as, as you look to update that conditional use permit, they have all of this information in one location. And so that is kind of where we are at with the master planning effort right now. I think what we're looking for is any feedback from the Commissioners today, but kind of our next steps is to make any adjustments based on feedback, start looking through some costs for some of the stuff for your long-range planning, and as Nick had mentioned, updating that conditional use permit, so with that, we would certainly entertain any questions from the board.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Fahey.
On that slide, sir, that, on the main building, and maybe Nick has information, but that OPT-1, what's the future intent for that area?
So the conversation is there is potentially long-term, indeed, for some additional maintenance and storage space, and so those two bays on the north side of the building, one of them is for the mechanics area and the other one is for vehicle storage, and so those two areas were, could potentially be expanded to be larger, and they would fit in that inside corner of the building.
Essentially, there's an option 1, 2, and 3, so option 1 would be expanding our current building that's there, or option 2 or 3 would be to create additional sandable buildings.
But that, kind of why I asked the question, option 1, if that's what it's going to be, the work bay area, we're already doing that work just to the east of there in that building, correct, it's just going to expand where they do the maintenance on the big plow trucks, et cetera. We probably don't want to move that to a separate building
Right.
In the future?
The future power routes as the county grows, probably need a couple more trucks in there, so the back part is truck storage too.
Yep.
So that would be a concrete building expansion.
And would it actually ultimately end up part of the building?
Yeah.
But it, we don't have to do anything to the existing building to knock a door in it? We got to knock a couple doors in, or?
Yeah, there'd be some light renovation in and around the edges, depending upon what the program is for that. We haven't gone into any in-depth, long-range programming for the mechanics or vehicle storage, it was ultimately, in the time horizon of this building, there is probably some need for additional space, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't master planning it in a way that would preclude some of that happening in the future.
Yeah, and I think that's a great idea, because then you talk about the future Public Works expansion area and then that real small green, green piece there, that's where the hallway is, I think they currently barbecue out there, that little square on the east side? Yeah, to, to make that into a usable workspace.
Yes.
Yep. Correct, yeah.
The other one, Commissioner Fahey, came out of that previous study we did with Lord Chau, remember that?
Trying to combine it all into one.
We are, we are being recorded, so I'm not sure, Lyndon, you should step up. No. I just, we kind of get a little lazier on the work session. I'd have a question, so I, I was elected to the county board in 2003, and we promptly had a ribbon cutting or a for this building, so that's how old it is. Not too long afterward, we had to replace a, some sort of corroded conduit, underground conduit. And I know that over the years, we've talked about because there's a lot of brine mixing and salt, and the migration of the salt to other areas of that is corroding things, do we have that science figured out? It seems like it's going on pretty heavy here, and do we have that figured out, how to, how to keep salt and brine where it is and not migrating to the rest of the site, and Nick, you're looking at me like
No, I'm sorry.
Like you want to giggle.
More of a lending question, but I think right now they're doing it more in the wash bay, which is separate from a lot of the other space, so that it tries to contain it in one spot. I think the hope is long-term that we would move it even further away from the building.
You're talking about the trucks we wash?
Oh, so, no, Mr. Chair, I think right now in the wash bay is where they're mixing it.
Okay.
Mixing the brine.
But I, but I always just knew that even just the pile, the silo, or wherever you're storing it, you can get migration, and I'm just wondering if we have that in mind? I'm looking at the architect now.
Talking about the salt?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's covered. The current shed's covered, so.
Okay.
You have to get an MPCA permit every
So we figured it out.
Yep. But we do want to build a new brine facility that would be totally contained, so if there's a spill, it would be contained. Wright County, if you've ever been there, they've got an awesome one, so as the county grows, that, there's, there's some really great models out there.
I guess that was my question. You have that three brine, does that have to be heated?
No.
No, that does not, because you have it right next to the salt shed. That does not have to be heated to mix the brine. Would it make more sense to run the fence where you had your option 2 building, would it make more sense to run that fence out there to encompass option 2? And then have you looked at maybe option 2, that building would be better suited where the dog training area is? And then have the dog training right to the west of that building? I was just a thought, if you look at that.
We talked a little bit about the various locations for those buildings. We didn't want to necessarily, you know, the area where the dog training is right now was an area that was designed to be able to have a building there, so that's also another opportunity as well, so I think that's certainly a good suggestion, if we're going to leave that option 2 building there, that it, we should probably push the fence over to make sure that it's inside that yard area.
Mr. Chair, can I go back to your comment about, did you say corroded pipe? Were, were you referring to the Forstmann sewer pipe? That's the one that broke, right, or cracked that we had to repair, so that goes back, there's a Forstmann sewer system that goes back to the city's water treatment plant? And I'm assuming that's in existence as far as the eye can see here, given that this isn't exactly the way that the city is rapidly expanding anyway, correct? So, so just to be clear, there is still that Forstmann in place from the beginning.
I thought this was an electrical issue back then, but
I don't think we've had No, this is a, it's actually, is a PVC or some other plastic, I think it's only
Okay.
Talking about I think Commissioner Wortman's talking about some other, was it underneath the concrete?
Yes.
Corroded?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I don't remember that. I know we had an issue with the floor drain.
Yeah, we fixed that.
Remember that, we fixed that.
Yep.
But that's about all I've got of my knowledge. But the Forstmann, long-term, we'd like to hook up the city water sewer. That won't happen until the city comes here to love us. Then that driveway that we showed, we look, it will become a city street.
And if I could, I don't, their 2040 plan doesn't touch this site, I mean, it doesn't get to the site, correct?
Correct, it doesn't come over the side.
So this is their plan stand, it's going to be quite some time.
Do we have rough cost estimates here for, I know there's a lot of options, but this looks expensive.
Yep, that was my question.
Taken as a totality, probably yes. Our intent is to meet with the group again, but we wanted to get in front of the board, release some feedback, and put together some ideas on what some of these different things might cost, and then certainly as part of your strategic conversation, that's part of the purpose, is to give you the numbers so you can make some decisions around that.
Because we've had in the previous budgets, payment costs, correct, did we, what was that?
I think we have Three hundred thousand. I thought it was a million, you told me eight hundred thousand.
Lost 200,000?
So, yeah, we've had that in the, I think that was a scheduled attachment aid year in savings budget a few years ago. We've got that still, but the fencing and other things that need to happen, that, that number is out of date.
Are we having any security issues out there now that would require a fence?
Not that I'm aware of, but the sheriff has his stuff up there, did we talk about the sheriff's needs at all?
Beyond having space up there for
Future?
Future stuff?
Yeah. Do they know about that?
Because in general, it's a pretty isolated site. Right now, you can only get to it from 212 if you wanted to steal something.
Yes.
You'd have to come right up that driveway, and assuming the cameras would catch any of that activity.
So you don't have a ballpark, tens of millions?
No, we haven't gone through a pricing exercise yet, I think certainly the, some of the buildings are more expensive than others. The outbuildings are just typically wood frame, whole barn type stuff that are easy to put individual prices on those, and so our intent would be to have each of these, as you say, the, those expansion areas, at least a rough order of magnitude on those, and then we'll probably break it down into fencing and you know, site improvements and that type of stuff is what are, what we've been talking about as a group.
And I would add to, Mr. Chair, that a lot of these projects might be 10, 20 years out. You know, we want to get everything on this master plan to go through the conditional use process. Some of these might be sooner, but that's another thing, in addition to the cost, we need to talk about the timing and how this might fit into our long-term financial plan looking forward, knowing that there's competing interests with other building projects and road projects and other capital projects.
Well, and, and Nick, you know, I guess you know, i- is there, I'm sorry, maybe to Lyndon, i- is there a difficulty, I know Cologne seems a little bit further out there yet these days, it's, it's getting closer. Do we have a problem hiring employees that think, wow, I gotta go way out there if they live in the suburbs somewhere? Is, is there an issue there?
Oh, yeah.
There is?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Are you one of them?
Good.
No, no, one of them. But we do have a, yeah, that's a separate topic, we do have a recruitment issue.
Well, certainly remote work helps.
Yeah.
It's a big part of the strategy overall, but yeah, I would say, I would agree that it's a concern, especially in a tight market.
We talked about building an office in Eden Prairie, remember Dave?
I'm kidding.
That went over like a lead to lung.
It's a huge advantage, Mr. Chair, if you live in North Young America.
Yeah.
Which I think most people should do, they should, I would.
Do we have like a phased development of this, I mean, like repaving, the moving of the fuel island and building the brine shed, that'd be the first three, anything else, fencing?
Yeah, the stuff in, in dark gray, the 212 project we'll build, right? The parking area, probably the fencing, maybe, like you said, would be the first phase, but yeah, we'll come up with that and budget for each.
So, so to be clear, Commissioner Wortman, if I may, so to be clear, so what's in gray is something that has to be done sooner rather than later because of 212, correct?
Yes, the dark gray, for sure.
The dark gray, so how is that being funded?
212 project.
Okay.
It's all in there, it's all bid, everything.
Got it, and so the remainder, so, so you'll give us an option just for what we have to do soon? And then the remainder options are, go on the long-term plan, okay? And then the remainder options are, um, go on the long-term plan, okay? So, and how would those be funded?
Well, the immediate, the light gray is already semi.
Founded by two twelve, right.
No, no, light gray, dark gray?
Yes, okay, I see. There is a small distinction.
The, the, so the, the road north-south
Yes.
is the two twelve connection. The lighter gray, which is the parking areas, that we had a million, maybe it's a little less now in the, in a previous year's budget, so we already have that money.
Got it.
We don't know if that's enough, though. We have to do the cost estimating. And then the future stuff would have to be programmed in our CIP or our long-term plan.
Got it, alright.
From more various sources. We haven't determined any of that yet.
Okay, so no, thank you for that clarification.
Sorry, Commissioner Anderson.
Mr. Hemsley.
Just to, just to add to that, don't forget we have this broader space master plan.
Yeah.
That, that has a number of big elements in there. One, one of the bigger ones would be the First Street Center facility.
Yes.
And did we, did we prioritize those, Nick, or lay those out phasing-wise?
We just identified phase one being the government center. We didn't get into the other years just because they're further out and we didn't have cost estimates, you know, thinking that far out. So really, we're focusing on phase one, which is the government center, and then we'll reevaluate after that, uh, the other needs, which includes First Street Center, some things at Public Works, uh, if you go to our sites.
And then it's time to upgrade the courts eventually or
Yeah.
you know, refresh. Yeah, that, that's part of that master space plan, way out there.
Yep.
And remember, one of the keys is our five-year CIP. That's where these things start getting more realistic, although Dave has some fluffy language on it's intent, it's not real, right? There's not real funding in there. Uh, but, but that's real key. Those things tend to happen once they get in there, for the most part. Because we're doing strategic planning, you know, keep all those things in mind because they couple together. And ultimately, it really hits, the rubber hits the road, literally, in some cases, with the annual budget and cycling, and, and, you know, case in point would be the government center bonds, and we'll provide more information on that and clarification on where that's at as part of the discretionary services exercise. But that's how everything fits together ultimately.
Thank you for that clarification, because that, that is, as I've touring other buildings, yeah, s- some are in more need than others.
And I would add, if I could, the master space plan that we did was focusing on office space. We excluded operational space. So now we're coming back and looking at things like this, the operational space for Public Works, uh, the environmental center, you know, we have the libraries hanging out there too. So again, our master space plan, I think, did a really good job looking at our office areas, but now we have to also look at some of the operational spaces.
Got it, thank you. And you're, wait, can I just ask, sorry, when you say operational space, um, what is that like, what, what is that to you? Because when I think of operations, I think of operations of the, I, I'm thinking that differently, so what is that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, so when I talk about operational space, it's pretty much the non-office area, so it's like Public Works storage, it's the, you know, environmental center, um, you know, that type of operations.
Thank you.
Mechanics, et cetera.
Well, libraries is a big one.
Yep, libraries.
Nick, would it make sense to the expanded visitor parking on the southeast corner? Would it make more sense to expand that towards the fiber optic shed so that you'd actually be closer to the, uh, entrance there and it could actually be handicap parking or something like that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, I think that would definitely be, be an option.
Because you already have the existing road there.
Yep, a- and just to clarify on that point, you know, the, this pavement project likely won't capture that, but as Public Works grows, that's where identifying that parking can also
Okay.
to that area.
And currently at this site, we don't have an office space issue, correct?
Uh, Lyndon might disagree with that, but, uh, we are, we are tight right now, um, with the office space. I've been always just looking out for some uh, additional space for them as well, but we're making do with what we have.
And you probably know this, but to make sure you do, there are others in the space too. Swelling water, extension.
Extension.
Uh, the, the cart program, what do we call it right now? The busing program, that, we moved most of that out?
They're moving out right soon.
Yeah, so they originally had two offices between extension and Public Works kind of tucked in there. Uh, they vacated the back office, uh, right around COVID. The front office, they're still holding, but they're going to vacate that, I think around July or August, so the summer.
I have the buses, I'm in the outfit.
Scott County.
Scott County?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, they're, they're busing garage in.
Isn't there a township meeting office in there, in that little pocket?
Correct, Benton Township runs a office space from us to, uh, hold their township meetings.
Nick, what's upstairs of the Chan License Center right now?
That is a health and human services program. I think it's called, was it Anika?
Anika, yeah, Anika, yep.
Are we using the offices at Tollywood?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, I don't think right now, we have had a few popping locations. I know Veterans Services for a while had a, uh, pop-in location for some of the veterans out in that side of the county. We've tried to find, uh, a good use for that, so I think we continue to explore as we face, uh, space needs, uh, if there's a good opportunity, but I don't think right now there's a service out of there.
Continue to explore, don't forget. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, a couple of comments? It looks like, uh, unofficially, that maybe we're looking out fifty years, that this site would be sufficient to service the needs of Carver County for fifty years based on some of the planning. Um, other things I heard is, uh, um, we don't know when Water and Sewer is going to make their way out there. Is that accurate? We don't have an idea. Um, I, I also heard signage, and I think it's a challenge across the county. I, I would volunteer that maybe Ari and other team have a look at it collectively, because we've got some pretty crappy signs at Minawaska. We got some crappy signs at Baylor, et cetera, and I think it might be on her, on her purvey. Um, but if we're going to put up a sign, I think it makes sense to have consistent visual language, not just copy and paste. Uh, new, new government center is on its way as well. And then finally, I've said it before, I'll say it again, if there's an opportunity to, to consider purchase of adjoining land, uh, to give us some economic, um, flexibility and expansion opportunity, I know other communities, uh, have looked at space next to Public Works to address some um, deficient areas when it comes to housing for the people that serve us. Um, there's some communities I've, I've researched recently that have, um, places that you're a wooden walking distance, and when we look at, from a retention and, and attraction standpoint, law enforcement could be a walk away to grab a squad car and be in service. Um, uh, Public Works, plow drivers, et cetera. Um, we, we haven't talked about, uh, some of the turnover and some of the challenges trying to find employment. I think we have sixty-two jobs open right now. Um, but some of these things are becoming, um, necessary. They seem innovative for the communities that are doing it right now. So I've been in support of exploring if there was a willing seller to acquire the potential seven hundred acres adjoining the Public Works area, and so if that pops up in the conversations, it might be interesting to see how that might play as well. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Any, anything else, gentlemen?
Nope, as I said, we will take the feedback that we got from commissioners today. We really appreciate that. And we will start to work with the Public Works team on kind of figuring out what these distinct projects are that align with your current funding, uh, and what those future things are, and I assume we will come back at some point in time and, and visit again.
How soon before that new entrance happens? That can't happen soon enough, I bet, out there, huh?
It's the summer.
Okay, because that's not a good situation.
I need to get a clarification. Sure. So what, what are we asking for in that conditional use permit?
So, uh, with all these changes, we'll need to update our conditional use permits. We'll essentially have to go through that process again, so we will. And Jason's here to, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, we'll have to do a conditional use permit application, just like if we were a, uh, business within the county, bring that to the township meeting, uh, go to the planning commission, and then ultimately the county board for approval for a county conditional use permit on the site.
To do what, then? To, for this, for the, the plan, what part of the plan?
For the, for the site plan, so with the changes to the entrance, the moving of the sign, the addition of the berms, that's triggering a need for us to revalue or redo our conditional use permit. So with that, we wanted to make sure we do a site plan and have, um, you know, this updated for future needs, so that we don't have to go back in two or three years or five years or whatever it might be if we have to add a building.
So we will a- actually ask for approval of berms, for example?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, so that'll go through the process, and then, uh, that'll then allow us to place those berms and.
Well, I think that refocuses my attention a little bit to watch the details here. So if you have concerns about components, that would be the time. Otherwise, we'll have to circle back to the township if we want to change them, maybe, right, depending what we want to change.
And we plan on moving the existing sign this summer?
Correct.
Did I hear Commissioner Uterman suggest, um, a a, um, since we're doing a new sign, a more common sign that would be a sign we'd use anywhere? I don't know if you, if you were sort of saying that, but it, it seems like we should have a common brand.
We should.
And maybe it should be at Baylor Park, and maybe it should be at Minawaska, and so, oh, yeah, I'm at a county facility, here's a county facility, it's the same thing.
Same branding.
We seem like we have gone a little cheap on our signs. I think Commissioner Uterman was saying that too.
The Public Works one's pretty nice.
It is.
Yeah, it's a really nice sign, uh, compared to others.
I think the word is schlocky, let's not be schlocky. Is that a word? I don't know, I use it a lot, but, um, you know, so that we have a common identity, and I think Ari or whoever, whoever the people are, that can help us make that look. And, and then this is when we find out how planning treats their customers, right? So Nick, pay attention.
They're great to work with, I will say.
Oh, boy, all right, well, pay attention, so.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would add for the, for the sign, for the, for the two twelve project, the plan is just to lift up that sign and relocate it. Uh, I, unless Lyndon's going to help me fund a new sign of the two twelve project, which I don't think he can. Uh, but the plan right now is just to relocate the existing sign. But I think with that, we could also look towards the future, uh, maybe that's part of our, uh, future request for a CIP project would be, uh, reviewing the signage and updating that.
And I'll remember what the sign looks like, Ari.
We'll have to look at that. I'm not sure it could be, I think the panels could be saved, but I don't think the whole structure probably should be rebuilt, so it's a good chance to look at the whole.
All of our signage.
Branding thing and see what this thing should look like, and we've got to figure out a budget for it, we'll have to figure it out.
I, the price just went up.
You did that. No, no, we did that. We did that.
All right, anybody else on anything else? Seeing nothing else, let's, uh, let's adjourn this meeting. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.